Hello, welcome back. This is our session three on our study of Romans chapter six. And I trust you brought your Bible and you're ready to jump back in to our battle plan against the war against sin in our hearts and minds. Let's have a word of prayer and we're going to look at verses 12, 13, and 14 today. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, thank you for the Scripture. Thank you for what it's teaching us. Let us not be weary in well-doing. Help us to grasp this by the work of the Holy Spirit. Transform us by your grace. Thank you for grace. Amen. All right. Again, this is a lot of material, I know that. And maybe you didn't catch everything, maybe you want to re-listen to some of this and maybe that'll be of help to you, I trust that it is. And the more I go through it and meditate on it, the more it's getting into my heart and mind as well, and I'm grateful for that. So here we go, session number three on Romans chapter six. Let's look at verses 12, 13, and 14. Let not sin therefore reign in your mortal body, that ye should obey it in the lusts thereof; neither yield ye your members as instruments of unrighteousness unto sin; but yield yourselves unto God as those that are alive from the dead, and your members as instruments of righteousness unto God; for sin shall not have dominion over you, for ye are not under the law but under grace. I want to return for the third time to our illustration of the two kingdoms. Remember this, separated by a road. On one side is the kingdom of sin, kingdom of darkness, kingdom of Satan. On the other side, the kingdom of grace, kingdom of light, the kingdom of Christ. The moment of your salvation, the Holy Spirit takes you and relocates you from the kingdom of darkness into the kingdom of light. You are permanently relocated. This supernatural event, this magnificent event, this irreversible event, you are dead to sin and alive to God. Sin is no longer king. Sin no longer reigns. Sin no longer has authority over you. Grace reigns. Grace is king. Grace dominates. And as you live and serve your new master, Jesus Christ, and your new kingdom, at times sin yells across the road at you, can distract you, contempt you. But sin cannot change your address. It's done. You're dead to it. No longer does it have a rule and reign in your life. Now, to use Romans six terminology, you are dead to sin and alive to God. That's why it's monstrous for you or me as a Christian to say, "I can sin because I'm under grace." No, that's abhorrent to think that. Living in a new kingdom demands living with new conduct. And that's what the apostle's been addressing here in Romans six. But how many of you know this is not easy? My goodness, sin attacks, sin tempts, sin harasses, sin has declared war against you. Sin knows that it can no longer have its way with you, so it seeks and fights to regain a foothold in your life. And the apostle, what he's been doing here in Romans six, is he's been giving us a three-step battle plan in how to combat and fight sin in our bodies, waging war against sin in us. And I remind you that they are one word for each one, and then also I put an ing on the end of each one to remind you that it's a daily battle, not a one-time event. The first step, verses three to 10, is knowing. This is what you must know in your battle every day. You must know that you are united to Christ in his death and in his resurrection. Because you are in the one who has defeated sin, you will beat sin. You have a superior position. You are dead to sin and alive to God because of Jesus Christ, knowing. Then our second step in this battle plan is reckoning. You must believe that what is true for Jesus is also true for you. You must not only know the truth, but you are convinced that it is true for you, even when it doesn't feel that way. We reckon it to be true. So knowing and reckoning. But today, we look at in this session, the third step in this battle plan in waging war, winning the war against sin, and that is yielding. You must act on what you know is true for you. So let's look at step number three. The entirety of this session will be given over to step number three, yielding. You do not win wars without action. You may know that you have superior position, and superior arsenal, and superior personnel. You may know that you have superior strategy. You may believe and reckon it all to be true for you. But if you don't act on what you know and believe to be true, you're still not going to win. You will still lose. So in your war against personal sin, you do have the superior position. You do have the superior power. You are united to Christ, the conqueror of sin, but you must fight from your position of power. You've got to take action. You partner with what has happened to you in order to win against sin. So in these three verses, the apostle issues a four-fold call to action in this third step. All right, I'm going to give all four at the beginning, and don't worry, we'll go through them throughout this particular session. So here's his four-fold call to action in the matter of yielding. Number one, do not allow sin to reign in your body. I'll say that again. Do not allow sin to reign in your body. The second call to action is also a negative. Do not offer any part of your body to sin. So the first one, do not allow sin to reign in your body. Number two, don't offer any part of your body to sin. That's two negatives. Then there are two positives. All right. So number three, the third call to action is, offer yourself to God. And then number four, or the second positive, is offer every part of your body to God. So let me give you all four. Do not allow sin to reign in your body. Do not offer any part of your body to sin. Offer yourself to God. Offer every part of your body to God. All right? Those are the four-fold call to actions on this matter of yielding. So let's work through it. Number one, do not allow sin to reign in your body. Would you look at verse number 12? Let not sin therefore reign in your mortal body, that ye should obey it in the lusts thereof. Now, two things can be true at the same time. In Christ, you died to sin, but that does not mean that sin is dead. Sin is very much alive. Sin is not happy that he has lost his authority over you and his kingship. Sin is not happy that the terms of your previous relationship have been severed. For the Christian, sin has become something like a jilted lover. He is upset he has lost you. He is obsessed with stalking you. He longs to master you again. He longs to possess authority over you. He craves control over you again, but you are in Christ. He cannot have dominion over you. You are permanently dead to sin, so sin, your former lover, your jilted lover, declares war upon you. So the fact is, Satan knows he has lost you to Christ. He cannot have you, so he works to hurt you. He wants to wound you. He's angry at you. He wants to bring carnage into your life. He wants to stick it to you because he has lost you. He wants to make you miserable. And so he targets the only vulnerable spot in you, and that is your mortal body. Satan attacks you. He tempts you. He stalks you through the sinful passions. Here our text says, "the lusts of your body." Now, let me be very clear here. Sin cannot destroy the new you. Sin cannot dominate the new you that you are in Christ. The new person in Christ will always desire righteousness, will always abhor sin. Sin cannot dominate the new you, but sin can dominate your mortal body. Remember though, what we learned in our last session, sin's power over your body has been disabled. It doesn't have to rule. It doesn't have to reign, but it can in your mortal body. Can I put it this way? You are the new man or the new woman living in the old flesh. The flesh, the body, is the battleground. That's where the battle is waged. That's where the battle will be won or lost, on the battlefield of your body. That's why here, verse 12, the apostle says, "Don't let sin reign in your mortal body." This is the body that is corruptible and dying. You know what this tells me? This is wonderful. Your fight with sin, Christian, is not forever. Your fight with sin will last only as long as your mortal body will last. There is coming a day soon and very soon when Jesus will return. And oh, he will fashion your body, and he will make it like unto his glorious body. You will have a body free of sin one day. There's nothing wrong with your body. It's just the old body, and you're getting a new one one day. This old body will be remade, renewed, oh, that day. It hasn't happened yet. That's why it is the battleground of sin. And I believe also, that's why the apostle talks so frequently about fighting sin in your body. I'm going to give you several verses here, you can check them up later. Romans 6:19, the apostle says, "The weakness of our flesh hinders spiritual understanding." Romans 7:18, "In our flesh dwells no good thing." Romans 7:23, "Every part of our bodies are subject to the law of sin." Romans 7:24, "That's why we lament, who will deliver us from this body of death?" Romans 8:23, "We are groaning for the redemption of our bodies. We want a new body." Romans 12:1, "Because of the gospel mercies, we are to hand over our bodies as a living sacrifice to God." 1 Corinthians 9:27, "We discipline our bodies, lest after we preach to others, we would be cast away." We want to submit to God our bodies. Colossians 3:5, "We ought to mortify or put to death the sinful desires left over in our body," those desires, those cravings in every part of our body. The apostle Paul frequently says, "The battle is in the body." So don't let sin reign in the body. And because you are the new person in Christ, sin cannot dominate you. It can dominate your body, so don't allow it to, because the power of sin over your body has been disabled. All sin can do is attack. All sin can do is harass. All sin can do is worry and tempt you. It cannot ruin your soul, but it can go after your body. So therefore, be aware and fight off the sinful lusts of your body, the leftover sinful desires. Okay. So that's the first part. Remember, remember our battle plan. I don't want you to get lost here. What you know, what you must reckon, and then you must yield. You've got to act. Well, how are we acting? By number one, don't allow sin to reign in your mortal body. Now, number two, and here's the second negative, do not offer any part of your body to sin. Look at verse 13. Neither yield ye, there's our word, yield, "neither yield ye your members as instruments of unrighteousness unto sin." Okay, let me back up. Sin can reign in your body, but it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to reign in your body anymore. So let's define some terms here. The word members, it says, "Don't yield your members. Don't hand over. Don't offer your members as instruments of unrighteousness." What is this thing called members? Well, simply put, the members here are all the parts of your body. It's the members of your body. How do you express yourself? How do you function? How does your personality come through? Duh, through your body. You express yourself through your eyes, through your mouth, through your imaginations, through your thoughts, your gestures, all the parts of the functions of your body. This is how you express yourself. These are the members of your body. You're the new person, and you're using your old body to express yourself. And now he says, "Don't offer, or yield, or hand over all the functions and parts of your body as an instrument of unrighteousness." What is this idea of an instrument? It's something that can be used. It's like a utensil. It's a weapon. It's a tool. Your body is neutral. All the parts of your body are neutral. Therefore, it can be used as an instrument. And the apostle says, "Don't you use your instrument. Don't you offer your body parts as an instrument of unrighteousness." That means this, only you can grant permission for how the different parts of your body are going to be used. Either you will allow sin to use your body parts, or you will allow God to use all the parts of your body. So he's saying, "Don't allow any part of your body to be used by sin as an instrument or a tool for unrighteousness." Now, there is a phrase in baseball, I love the game. There is a phrase in baseball, when the opposing team is fearful of the other team's power hitter, they're afraid that the pitcher is going to serve up a pitch, and the power hitter's going to crush the ball and going to cause damage to the team. So the phrase goes like this to the pitcher, "Hey, take the bat out of his hands." That's what they say to the pitcher. What do they mean? Does it physically remove the bat? No, it means this, "Don't give him anything to hit. Don't allow him to do any damage with the bat. Take the bat out of his hands. Pitch around him." So in your war against sin in your body, don't give sin your body parts. Don't let sin damage you, hurt you, attack you, make any inroad in you through the parts of your body. Take the bat of your body parts out of his hand. Now, let's apply this a little bit to our world today. It's very common today for us to condemn people who body shame. You've heard this, haven't you? I mean, here's a, that popular understanding that it's usually body shaming has to do with the shape of somebody's body, you know? So here's a girl, she goes on Instagram, she puts up a picture of herself, and she captions it, you know, "This is me, hashtag unfiltered. All you haters out there, don't hate on me. You know, this is me, hashtag unedited. Hashtag if you can't love me the way I am, I judge you for judging me." You know, I love all those things. Okay. So we make a big deal in our world today about body shaming. And if you shame, anybody who shames somebody's body is truly sinful. It should never be named among Christians. It's hateful. It's utterly wicked. That type of body shaming should never be mentioned once among Christians. And typically, this has to do with young ladies. That's usually where the body shaming is targeted. Not always, it can also be towards men, but typically for young lady. So whether you are a young lady or a young man, I just want you to know, you are made in the image of God. You are beautiful in God's sight. Don't you allow anybody to define your identity by your body type. God designed you that way. Christian, your identity is Jesus Christ, not your body shape. But typically, our understanding of the body and body shaming just goes on the surface level of the body shape. But a Christian doesn't body shame, because a Christian, our understanding of the body goes much deeper than its shape. We do not body shame. We body honor. 1 Corinthians 6:19 and 20, "Do you not know that your body, Christian, is the temple of the Holy Ghost? Which is in you, which you have of God, you are not your own. You're bought with a price, the blood of Jesus. Therefore glorify God in your body." So let's apply this to Christians. Let's apply this to new people. We are not going to hand over the body parts of our life to sin. See, Christians do not body shame. We body honor because we are bought with the blood. So let's apply. The Christian does not shame his body. We do not shame our body by revealing as much skin as we possibly can to feed our pride. We do not shame our bodies by flaunting a revenge body to shame an ex. We are new people in Christ. We have a different understanding of the body, so we don't shame our bodies by harming them, cutting them, gorging them, purging them. We don't shame our bodies by spending our nights in immoral viewing and actions. We do not shame our bodies by slanderous and bitter words, using our tongue or our thumbs in posting slanderous, biting, cutting words. We don't shame our bodies that way. We're bought with a price. We do not shame our bodies by anxious thoughts and worrisome imaginations. No, true body shaming is so much deeper than body type. True body shaming is handing over the parts of our body so that sin can degrade our body. That's what Satan wants. Satan wants to degrade us. He wants to hurt us. So don't body shame by handing over the parts of our body back to sin to degrade in sin. Stop shaming your body, it belongs to God. Let me give you an example. This is an old example, but in the 16th century, the Archbishop over in England, his name was Thomas Cranmer, he's a good Christian, believed in the true gospel of Jesus. But a monarch, a new monarch came to the throne, Mary the First, Queen Mary. She is popularly known as Bloody Mary. She embraced the Catholic faith, and she attacked all those who held to the true gospel of justification by faith alone in Christ alone, apart from the church. And that's of course what we believe, because that's what the Bible teaches. But he was a pretty big target, and so she and her administration went after Cranmer. He would not recant his position on the gospel, so as they put him in prison for three years, deprived him of family, deprived him of comforts, deprived him of a lot, and nearly broke him bodily, emotionally, mentally, and so forth. At the end of three years, they pulled him back out and said, "You want to see your family? You want to be set free? You want to have your freedom again? Then all you need to do is just recant your teaching on what we would know as the true gospel of Jesus Christ, and embrace what we believe in the Catholic faith." And Cranmer was so beaten down, he signed his name to recant what he formally held. In his weakness, he did that. As soon as they got his signature from this big, important person in the Protestant faith, they burned him at the stake anyway. They lied to him, burned him. "As he was tied there, and soon the fire was lit, and before it began to engulf his body, Cranmer took his right hand, and he stuck it in the flame first." And this is what he said, "As my hand offended, writing contrary to my heart, my hand shall be first punished." You see what he was saying? "I had a weak moment. I yielded a part of my body to sin, therefore I will cause this to be burnt first." Now, that's an extreme thing, but the apostle's point is, "Do not allow or offer any part of your body to be given over to sin." So there you go. Those are the first two calls to action in this yielding in our battle against sin. So now we move on to the positives, the final two, they'll go a little bit quicker, and that is this. Number three, offer yourself to God. Would you look at verse 13? Again, "Don't yield your members as instruments of unrighteousness unto sin, but yield yourselves unto God as those who are alive from the dead." You are alive from the dead, so yield yourself to God. Now, if you're not careful, you would think that these four are actually mirrors. Don't allow sin to reign in your body. Don't give any parts of your body to sin. Offer yourself to God. Offer every part of your body to God. Two and four go together, but one and three are not mirrors of one another. What was number one? "Do not allow sin to reign in your body." Number three, "Offer yourself to God." In other words, number one, he does not say, "Don't offer yourself to sin." Why? You can't offer yourself to sin. You're the new person in Christ. You will never be able to give yourself to sin. You've been permanently relocated. You can give your body to sin, but you can't give yourself. I find that fascinating. So here he is, he says, "Offer yourself to God." He's not even talking about your body yet, he's talking about you, the new person. This is what sets Christianity apart from secular moralism. Non-Christians can live good lives. Non-Christians can do good things, but they are not concerned with living a holy life to God. They are not concerned with pleasing God. They are not concerned with yielding, offering themselves to God. But we, remember, we are the people who died to sin. We are the people who are alive from the dead. That's why we offer ourselves to God. Lord, my life is yours to control. 2 Corinthians 5:14 and 15, "It is the love of Christ that controls us. From this point on, we will not live unto ourselves, but we will live to him who died for us and rose again. He was moved to die for you, are you moved to live for him? Have you placed yourself at his disposal today? Offer yourself to God, Lord. Today, I know sin is going to fight me. Sin is going to come after me, but I belong to you. I give myself to you. Have you done this today?" And then we come now to the fourth call to action, and that is, a mirror of the second one, "Offer every part of your body to God." Look back at verse 13. "And your members as instruments of righteousness unto God." All right? Remember what members are? It's every part of your body. We are meant to serve the living God with the entirety of ourselves. No part of you is to be held back from God. No way in which you express yourself, no part of your body, no imagination, no thought is to be given to sin. It's all to be offered up to God. It is a glorious act of God worship when we hand over every part of our body to God. That's what Romans 12:1 says. "I beg you therefore, brethren, by the mercies of God, that you present," it's the same word as yield here in verse 13, "that you offer up your bodies as a living sacrifice, wholly acceptable unto God. This is your worship, your actual, or reasonable act of worship and service. We offer every part of our body to God." In the 18th century, right before the colonies became the United States, one famous preacher today, his name was Jonathan Edwards. Before he became a preacher though, when he was 19, he wrote this in his journal. He was 19, and he said, quote, "I have this day solemnly renewed my self-dedication. I have been before God, and have given myself all that I am and have to God, so that I am not in any respect my own. I can challenge no right in this understanding, this will, these affections which are in me. Neither have I any right to this body, or any of its members. No right to this tongue, these hands, these feet. No right to these senses, these eyes, these ears, this smell, or this taste. I have given myself clear away, and have not retained anything as my own." End quote. Have you been before God today? Have you offered him your eyes, your mouth, your heart, your ears, your imagination, your desires? Have you offered yourself to God today? Every part of your body? This is our call to action on the battleground of our mortal body. Do not ever forget, the battleground is the body. Who will you give your body parts to? Don't allow sin to reign in your body. Don't offer sin the parts of your body. Offer yourself to God, and offer him the parts of your body. This is that third battle plan, step in the battle plan, which we come now to verse 14, "Sin shall not have dominion over you, for you are not under the law but under grace." Before salvation, you were under sin. You were under the demands of the law. God's law rebuked you. God's law condemned you. But grace broke in, shattered the reign of sin. Sin no longer dominates you, so it does not have to dominate your mortal body. Who are you going to give your body parts to today? As I close session two, I close with session three. I speak to those who have not yet been saved, to a non-believer here. Do you know that Jesus Christ has died for you? Have you believed that Jesus Christ has done all that is necessary to make you right with God? If so, then here's the call to action. Submit to him. Repent of your sin. Turn away from your sin. Give yourself to God, and you will find his salvation. And you find his salvation in Jesus Christ alone. So there's our battle plan, Christian, in fighting sin, knowing, reckoning, and yielding. May God bless you.